I'd like to call to order the policy committee meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, 6:30 PM. We are meeting via Zoom teleconference. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
Hey, Mr. Guarino is here. Nazim?
Here.
Is Bishop?
Here.
Okay, we also have Ms. Odin with us. And hey, I'm on twice, okay. This Cancela is with us.
Here.
And I believe that's everyone.
Yes. So what we have, what we're looking at for this policy meeting is proposed policy EBCG, emergency policy on personal protective measures, face masks and cloth face coverings. So this came from the New Hampshire School Board Association that we just joined. Did anybody want to speak to it? There's a lot in here. I'm looking at her.
I have a question that came to us as confidential. Do we have to go into non-public because it came to us as confidential?
Just the sample policy came in as confidential, Mrs. Odin. And the reason we didn't do that is because we pay a fee for that and we didn't want to share it and make it a public document because it's something we contract with NHSBA to have those. So we wanted you to see what their recommended policy was, but we didn't want to make that a public document. Our version is the public document.
Okay, thank you, Tara.
You're welcome.
I was also wondering in regards to all of this, which, I mean, I think we have an obligation to make sure that our staff is safe while they're at school. Is a cost analysis on how much all of this is going to be for? Does anybody else have those questions?
I have more than just about the cost. From my perspective, this is a legal document because I think that we are, I was sharing this with DOT before you started the meeting. In my perspective, we are, we are a litigious society, unfortunately. And as such, these documents would be called, I would assume they would be called into question if there were a lawsuit that suggested that we did not provide the safety and security that the RSAs and these documents require. And so as such, it seems to me as a legal document, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't present myself to be the lawyer. But I wonder if they, I said, don't they need to be reviewed by an attorney? And Mrs. Odin said, well, the New Hampshire School Board Association, that gentleman who sent us the samples, or, you know, one of them was an attorney, they both were attorneys actually, as I recall now that we're speaking about it. And so then the question came to my mind, so as such, do we need to have them reviewed by them? And if we do, is there an additional expense? I have to believe there is. And then my second thing that has come up, and I'm sorry to give you all these difficult questions, but in the past, Mrs. Patrick, of course, somewhat spearheaded and came to us with a, it was the policy in the past that she came to us with a suggested whole policies and she would go through them and she would come and say, this appears to be remiss and these are the proposed changes that I recommend. Or, I don't know, I, but I believe that it was primarily her. And so I'm wondering where, and I see that Mr. Parker has joined us. So I'm wondering if, that's all the hot air I want to share for now. So let's see what somebody else says about these things that I'm throwing out there.
Well, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Parker. Welcome.
Welcome, yes.
Sorry. And so I don't know if these policies have been actually reviewed by the lawyer. I had assumed that they were, but I can certainly confirm that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is there are two sample policies and then there's the national policy. And in the past, Mrs. Fitzpatrick or whoever the assistant superintendent happened to be, reviewed that. Now, I believe that in that she would go back to the School Board Association and, and I don't know how she did it, to be honest with you, but she would come to us with proposed changes. She would come and she would have it, you know, we have reviewed this and these are the, these are the things that we see as needing to be corrected. And we would kind of go from there. So I don't know whether you heard, yeah, so.
I can certainly do that. I didn't realize that, so I appreciate that information. And I can certainly pursue that and come back to you with the corrections, so.
Well, unfortunately, you didn't have, you didn't get to spend time with your predecessors. So that prevented you from having, and coming in when you have, obviously, you had to jump in and swim in water over everybody's head, not just yours. So we're certainly not, I'm certainly not intending this as criticism. We're so happy to have.
No, no, I don't take it as such. And so thank you for your generosity. This is my first meeting. And so I will, I will certainly pursue this with fidelity and quickly to get back to this body.
And can I just, while I, while I have all this hot air, and I, I hope you won't, sometimes I can be nice. I'm not always making it difficult for people. That's certainly not my intent. But I was reading through it and some of the questions, one of the things was they were talking about when you have students who can't see or they can't hear or they can't, for one reason or another, they can't use a mask. And, and so one of my concerns is if, if they don't have to wear a mask and it's saying that if it anyway affects their health poorly, they don't have to have a mask. And my question is, as you're looking into it, do we, and Mrs. Odin probably correctly said, well, they probably will be kept to themselves, but I don't know that. And if, shouldn't that be spelled out? I guess I'm, because I'm, because I sell real estate, Mr. Parker, and I know how litigious we are. One of the proudest things in my life is I've never had a lawsuit in my real estate business, 50 years. And there's nobody can say that because good people, it's just, it's so litigious out there. So I'm, I'm concerned that we need to spell out more of, as it talks about, you know, the kids, you know, if you, if you come down with it, you have to be removed immediately. But it wasn't, what I saw, it doesn't seem to spell out for those others who may already be contaminated because we didn't know, I mean, you know, this, this is such a, this disease, you don't know it's there sometimes until it's done more damage. So don't you have to quarantine and do we have to spell, how much of that do we have to spell out? So those are, those are the two, two, two main things that pop out at me. Maybe the others now would like to share where their concerns are.
Yeah, Miss Nazim, I would think that those would be two separate policies. And I would actually want to tease out, and Mr. Guarino, I see you. One, one sec. I would also think that we would need to tease out, it looks like they're putting in qualifiers for, you know, not maintaining these health standards. I think that would need to be a different policy in regards to how we respond to students not wearing a mask. Having them removed from, what is it? It says right here. I just lost it. Yeah, so make, making sure that they're following them in school. If they're not doing it in school, there's a consequence, they're removed immediately. But also when they're on the school bus, having to wear the mask on the school bus. However, I think we've come into a problem before with bullying on school buses and it's kind of pushed back to first student about how they're going to manage it. And it's not necessarily a school-related issue when it's at the bus stop or on the bus. So I think, I think this is a good jumping off point, but the way that our district is already kind of working, I think those things need to be teased out. Sorry, Mr. Guarino, go ahead. I started talking too much.
That was a good point.
I try to make them.
I said, born later.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think the reason why we don't have corrections, going back earlier, is because this is a new, it looks like a new policy, so you wouldn't have any corrections. But there are two alternatives. And, you know, I was looking at them both and it's my own fault, but I was looking at both of the alternatives and I didn't really see the difference. It doesn't look like there's a lot of difference between them. But if, if, if that was spelled out, the difference between them, that, that might help, help the board members. The other thing is that I believe reading through there that when it comes to hearing impaired students, that I think it, there is a, I thought I saw a line in there that said they should, they could use clear face masks.
Yes.
So, but I know that people have problems with this and I think we need to work out the problems as soon as possible because having a policy on, on file, I think, is important. The first, first thing is that this came from the School Board Association, which is good, made up of lawyers. So I think we have a solid background there. But I think this district should have a policy so that people are aware, at least of the rules and what we have to do. Because there's a lot of people who sent us emails saying that, you know, we don't know what to do now, how are we going to keep safe? And this is sort of a blueprint on how people can, can, can keep themselves safe. Now, if, if members are afraid that it's not quite ready and that it's, you know, it might, it might bring on some lawsuits, then I, I think we should iron out those details. But, but I do think we need to act on it. And I, I hope we can get something on paper and get something there so people have, can at least understand what's expected and what, what should happen to keep us safe from COVID.
I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Guarino, if I understand all the comments so far, I think this is a good guideline that's nimble enough to be enhanced if you have to come back to it over time. All right, because the Board Association does have a lot of lawyers and so I've never had to deal with them. But if they're like associations in Massachusetts, yeah, they're primarily lawyers and that's where you go to sometimes. Okay, but I think it's, it's a, it's a guideline. It's not, nothing is really, some things are set in stones and I think it's just common sense. They have to be. They have to be. What I'm hearing though is just you want some things teased out more, okay? You know, to give more examples and more details about what certain things might mean or look like.
And I, yeah, I really think that, that there's going to be an extra cost when we come up with our policy. And let's just, let's just guess that it's going to be a little bit from each. Then it will be different than those and we would, I would want an attorney, some attorney to review it. But that's just my thinking, so maybe, but I think that the NHSBA, I have to think they're going to have a charge for any special, for the attorney's time, but, but we can check that out. I would, I would think that would be one of the things that you would ask, please.
I have it.
Thank you.
Tara, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to get out of.
Go ahead. Just a little bit of an origin as to where these documents came from. I believe these are two versions of a policy that Attorney Bennett forwarded to us. Yes. And what we did was we sent you under separate cover the NHSBA's recommendation, recommended policy. So it's a lot to go over. It's a lot to compare. These are two recommendations from Attorney Bennett. We gave you the NHSBA, so we can kind of look to see what they as a state organization recommends. And then at that point, I believe when you come up with what you feel is something you'd want to put forward, Attorney Bennett could review it for us.
Attorney Bennett, thank you.
I'm wondering if it would make sense in regards to this because not, you know, not everybody is going to do the hybrid. Some of them are choosing to do remote. Is part of acknowledging your hybrid status is an agreement to this policy that when you're, you and your student are going to be utilizing the school district in person, that you're agreeable to following these rules. And then it's, there's a bit more buy-in from the public. I think we have to also acknowledge that we have, we have some families that do not agree with masks that we might have a hard time with, but we can't deny them an education. I mean, they could do remote. I just, I, I do think that that's a piece that we have to take into account. Yes, Mr. Guarino?
We also have families that don't believe in vaccines either and we require vaccines. So we have to make choices. We, you know, we can't leave things open-ended. And as far as I'm concerned, wearing a mask, if people don't want to wear a mask, they, we should, we should require it. And if they don't want to require it, then they don't come to our schools and put people in danger or put themselves in danger. So we, we have to make decisions. We have to make definitive, we have to have definitive actions. And nothing we put forward is going to be perfect. But we have to, we have to show people in the district that there is, there are guidelines and, and they're, if they want to know what's going on and how to, how to be safe and how to keep their children safe and their family safe, then they, we have these policies. And everybody should, should abide by the policy. So I think we need to take action. I, I don't think that this committee is ready to take action tonight. But I think we ought to, the committee ought to read them both and try to find out what the differences are and, and come up with something so that, I'm confident that the lawyers have looked at these and, and, and that they're, you know, that if they sent them to us and that they should be ready for, ready for prime time as far as I'm concerned. But I'm, I'm really not clear on the difference between, I have to do more homework on my own end, so.
Are there questions, Jen? Didn't you say there were questions that were emailed? Did, did all of the committee members get copies of those? No?
What?
Did you get emailed questions about these documents? Is that what you said earlier? No?
No, not about these documents. I was just getting updates from the first couple of days of school about just the, the resources that I think the teachers thought were going to be there and weren't. I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these teachers have been practicing social distancing and staying home and, and, you know, stay home, stay safe. And this is kind of their first big outing. And I think they were.
Overwhelmed.
Overwhelmed. I mean, the.
I would be too.
The backup at the photocopiers. I mean, you know, even within our district, we have, we have teachers that don't necessarily agree with all of this. And I think it was causing some concern with other teachers. You know, improper mask use, not, not hand sanitizing, you know, how people were choosing to eat at lunchtime. It was just, I, I think if we're going to come up with policies, we also have to come up with educational components. You know, wearing, wearing a mask, taking it off with your hands and shoving it in your pocket and then pulling it back out and putting it back on. That, that's not mask safety. You're, you're increasing the spread by touching your hands and then touching everything else. So I personally feel like for every policy we put in place where we're putting expectations on people, we also have a degree of responsibility in educating in proper use of these materials. I mean, I know when all this first came out and we were talking about washing your hands and singing for 20 seconds and, you know, we're very clear about that, but, you know, how do you safely use the photocopier, wipe it down, have the next person come, allowing, you know, the, the two minutes of time that the wipes need to sit, you know, wet, it has to stay wet for two minutes or whatever it is in order for it to properly disinfect everything. I think there's an element of that level of education that needs to happen in addition to providing these things. And I, I think people who knew what needed to happen were a little worried because there were certainly people that didn't know what needed to happen. So I think what I'm saying when I say we need to tease out this policy a bit more is I think we need to be really clear about, you know, there's how to keep equipment safe. There's how to keep people safe. There's how to keep kids safe. There's how to keep kids with, you know, ability differences safe. And also, you know, parents' acknowledgement of their responsibility in helping us keep all people safe. I think what's interesting with the sports piece was we had to sign a bunch of different waivers. You know, that you're agreeing to this if your student is participating. The difference is, is sports is optional and education we have to provide. So for every, for every ask that we make of students, teachers and parents, we have to be providing that education. So that's why I think this is going to be, I mean, I envision it being probably four separate policies under the same heading. What do people think of that?
When you were talking, I had to think about, I have a grandson who goes into second grade this year. He has ADHD. I take him with me sometimes when I go out in the car. He always has to wear a mask. He constantly breaks the string. He goes through three to five masks every time we get in the car.
Oh, boy.
And of course, when I pick it up and say, where's your mask, it looks like it, it looks like it swam in the mud puddle. And with kids, that's a common, that's not unusual thing. I mean, he's seven, now he's seven, but he has ADHD, so his, his processing is much slower than some. He's brilliant, but he's, his process, it's, he has his own unique set of circumstances like all the others. So, but, so I think you're, I think you're on target personally.
Thank you. I also think, you know, when we're talking about the students with, with the different needs and abilities, is there was a concern that I was hearing about the amount of, or the, excuse me, the lack of inclusion. So, you know, a lot of the parents and teachers work very hard to put, you know, our, our different ability students as mainstream as they can. And the plan really sounds like take those students and keep them in a separate place and away from everybody else because they have a lack of ability in maintaining the masks and everything that you're saying, Sandra. And I think what this can go to what Ray was saying is, is sometimes we do have to make definitive choices. However, I think we are legally responsible for providing the least restrictive educational process for every student. So we have to take that into account as well. Is we can't be taking, you know, kiddos with ADHD who are going to have a challenging time maintaining their mask safety. And the solution is, well, let's just keep them in the back classroom. And give those teachers more. So I, I know it probably sounds really micromanaging and it sounds like that was what was happening with the handbook was it was taking away some of the, the creativity from the, the teachers. But I think when it's too big, there are more opportunities for holes, if that makes sense. Mr. Parker, you about to say something?
Yes, I am. I mean, I think, I think Marsha Bagley and her team are working on that. You know, because a lot of things of how these students respond to is going to be worked out in IEP meetings. All right, and they're beginning to gear up soon. And so it's going to be different for certain kids, what's in their best interest and what the parents and the team agree to. And so it may be that some are in fact more isolated than they would normally be and others might not be. But I think it depends on the person's IEP. The goal is still the goal for, you know, because it's a legal obligation, you know, the goal is still to be able to do that. But that's individualized to each student's IEP. So I don't believe that we go into this saying that somebody is definitely going to be that good of a student. I think that is happening, but I think that Marsha Bagley and her team are well aware of certain concerns. And they're trying to address them case by case. But whatever a student's going to do, okay? And so I'm assuming we're referring to students on IEPs, okay? That is based on their IEP. And so what.
They don't have to. They, they don't have to. That's the parent's choice. If they want to come to class. In fact, I think that they're very fortunate because they have that choice. We can't afford to give everybody that, we just can't handle giving everybody that choice. But I think they're very fortunate to have that choice because they can look at their child individually and say, what is the best for my child based on their circumstances? So I would also though like to see us put in, in the policy somewhere about the parent's responsibility to keep the children home when they are sick. I, I do understand that we have parents who have jobs and, and they have no sitter. And, and so it becomes a, and I don't know how you deal with that. But I do think that, that when a child is sick, that if the parent sends them to school knowingly and I, and I have a daughter who's a teacher. She tells me that, that sometimes they do because they have no, they have nothing else. So I don't know how you handle that either, but that's a concern I have as well.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I, I don't think there is, I don't think there's a lot of difference between the two versions. I think there's a statement on the bottom of page one on the second that isn't there on the, on the first version. It says, "The Board finds that scientific research has emerged, has emerged that students age 10 and above present the same risk of viral spread as adults. To some extent, there may be reduced risk of viral spread by students below the age of 10." That, that, that's, those two sentences are not in page one on the first version. So, so I, I think that's, I'm going to look at, I'm going to look at this again. But that to me seems to be the only difference between the two versions. So I, I, what I'd like to know from the other members of this committee is where do we go from here? We should be taking action because we, this committee only meets once a month. Maybe, and we've already begun the school year and, and we need to have some policies in place. So my question would be, what, what steps should we take to, to get something moving and get, get going on this?
I think that goes to Mr. Parker. I think that Mr. Parker will bring us back. And I think, I think we have to make ourselves available as soon as possible because I agree with you, Ray. And Jen also said the same thing. These are too important to push to the side. But on the other hand, I'm sure that Mr. Parker has a lot of things that are too important to push to the other side. So to some extent, I would hope that the three of us are going to make ourselves available as soon as he can do it.
Well, I will make this a priority. I mean, there's a lot of priorities, obviously. And, and so forgive me, you know, not fully understanding the dimension of what's expected in this role. So I will, I will get on this as soon as possible and work with Tara to get information to you in a timely fashion, preferably before a month from now, obviously, and then next meeting. And then to get your feedback. But I have your points. I have your questions. And I will start digging in this week, this week. And so I would like to say, at least within a week's time, that I could get something back to you that you could have for consideration.
Yeah.
I will commit to that and to do that. So because, you know, personally, I mean, there's some things we could do here. But even if this was a placeholder in saying that, you know, we're going to add to it, at least it might delay some fears. But give me a week, you know, I have all your points and, and so I will. You know, I have all your points and, um, and so I will
Well, I think
Your questions.
I think one of the things you can do, Mr. Parker, is, um, to take something off your plate is in regards to buses. I, I think first student needs to come back with what their plan is going to be about ensuring safety on the bus. Um, we have pretty typically been not involved in bus issues. Um, so, you know, like the bullying on the buses, the, that, that kind of stuff, we've, we've typically taken a step away from. Um, so maybe first student can come up with, you know, what their plan's going to be. It sounded like they were probably gonna have monitors on the bus, uh, for a little bit. Um, but I think we need to have, um, three other kind of dropdown categories of this. Just different decision trees, I guess, is, is what I'm envisioning is, um,
May, maybe he can, ma- maybe he can have, um, one, one policy and put it in, put the alternatives in different color, like red or blue. That's
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's how Ms., um, I think that's how it was done before.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Something like that, rather than have different, we could have one, one document and, and maybe add, 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 uh, some things to it, but have them in a different, different color type or something like that.
Sure, I mean, that's easy to do, you know, or di- different categories to say the things that are different from what you've read here this evening. You know, have it there. And so, so this is just, so we hear parent responsibilities, you know, the equipment, um, policies, which is interesting. I don't think I had thought about it quite that way. Um, and so, um, those are two categories. Um, policies, if you have to quar- quarantine students. Um, there's the idea of linking it to hybrid. Do you hybrid, you know, some sort of parent sign off, like this is what we expect you to do? Um,
I, that wasn't referring, I wasn't referring to hybrid. I was referring to if they send
No, not you, Ms. Bishop, Ms. Bishop. And I have your points.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, I have no doubt this is a, a larger undertaking than what we were expecting.
Much, much. I can tell you from when I started looking at those documents, I got indigestion.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah.
I will, I will, I will review this with a lawyer again. I mean, I, not again, I, I haven't, I haven't met our lawyers yet, not formally. Um, but one thing I do know from my time in Massachusetts is that even with the documents, you wanna be specific but within limits until you need, um, you want it to be broad enough if you have to make some changes. But, um, you don't wanna have so much detail that people get stuck.
Right.
Get stuck. So less is more, but we have to make sure the less is
Clear.
Clear. Puppers enough ground. I'm telling you, really don't want to obviously the six pages. Because no one's gonna read it. No one's gonna, I don't want to read it.
Let me say this to you, I am very happy to turn this over to your capable hands. I am so glad that we have you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And, uh, so, um, does that make sense, Tara?
It does, actually, and I, you know, possibly, um, have our school nurse, head nurse review it as well.
Oh.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
And I really, I think the discipline piece needs to be taken out of this. I think that needs to be separate, um, because I think that needs to be on a pretty case by case basis as well. Um, so I think there are some things that we could put on hold. You know, obviously, safety is paramount. Um, obtaining whatever it is that we need to get is second to that. And then how are we going to support the changes that need to happen? I'm not calling it discipline. The changes that need to happen to ensure that everybody is safe. Um, does that make, am I overthinking it?
Um, respectfully, maybe a little bit, uh, just in terms of, uh, the discipline piece. We may not call it discipline, but I do think as a parent, folks would wanna know, because I think folks might have at least one general sense. All right, we might have to remove a child from the building. It's still a case basis if we have to do something different that has particular, uh, circumstances to it. But I think for the optics of it, I think if I was the parent, I mean, my kids are all out of school now, out of college and off on their own. But if I still had kids in school, I guarantee that's gonna be a question that people just wanna at least initially scratch that itch. Okay, at least we know that's a starting point and then we'll take it from there. All right, so I think leaving that piece in is important, it does play a role.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, uh, so, yeah, my second point I wanna make of this about the entire document, if I may, and it goes to Mr. Guarino's point. There might be particular people who don't like one thing about this or a group of people who don't like something else about it. And we wanna think about what do we do with those people? My operating assumption is that for every one person who may not like something, there are three more who do. And I always like to keep them in mind. You know, I just, as a general operating assumption, you know, and so I think there's a lot of things in here we can finesse, uh, and add to. But I think I have a feeling that a lot of folks, since they're worried about it, at least it gives them something to begin to shape the narrative.
Uh, when, when you're saying that, Mr. Parker, it puts me in mind, and maybe Jen can catch me if I'm wrong. But then the strategic plan, uh, he had, oh, that's my darn phone, I'm sorry. Uh, he had in the strategic plan, there was, I'm trying to knock my whole train of thought, but there was something about what you said in the strategic plan that, oh, the, it, we've always in the past done the policies and approved them without having, um, educators have an opportunity to have input. And if I'm not mistaken, part of the strategic plan was that we were not going to do that anymore, that we were going to give the educators an opportunity to review it before we voted it and made it policy. And that made so much sense to me. That's why, because in the past, I was on the board a long time and we used to make policies. And after the fact, the teachers would say, well, if I had known, we would have told you. Because they're in the classroom, they have the, the on-hand experience that we don't have. So they come up with things that I wouldn't, that I don't even think of, to be honest with you. So it made sense to me that we should at least give them an opportunity. And yeah, maybe you can check with Dr. Mosley because I think that, I think that was part of strategic plan. That was, I, I was just elected in this last term with Jen. So, um, Ray, of course, wa- was part of the strategic plan, he might even know. But I think that was, I think that was one of the changes that I was most impressed with, to be honest with you.
We had, we had a lot of focus groups, uh, with, not with, with teachers and, um, parents also and students and other stakeholders for the strategic plan. So we had, uh, we had quite a lot of peo- people with input. Um, but it ma- it does make sense to have teachers, educators in on, on, on what's happening, definitely.
Well, yeah, to get there, because there, we have wonderful educators in my view in this district. I think you're gonna love some of our teachers, uh, Mr. Parker. I have come to respect them greatly.
It's been a while since they've been back in various PD meetings and things like that. So, and, uh, so yes, I'm getting
We have some wonderful people, we really do, yes. Okay, thank you.
So just to go back to kind of what I'm hoping we can add into this is the, the educational piece about, um, using masks, having, you know, high-touch areas properly supported with, um, hand sanitizer, the availability of, of soap and wash stations. Um, and I, I know that because this is such a big policy, I know everybody's probably burnt out on meetings. Um, but I don't mind kind of revisiting this sooner than a month. Sandra's shaking her head. Oh, is that a no or a yes?
That's a yes. No, I think Mr. Parker even said that he was going to come back within a week or so, didn't you, Mr. Parker?
I did.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I know he has a lot going on too. I wanna be respectful of, of the amount of tasks and things that you have on your plate, Mr. Parker. So if, I know emails get a little shady because of the right to know stuff. But I mean, if we could go back and forth with updates and then have a meeting in like two weeks and review the updates that we've done kind of electronically, what do we think about that? Just to workshop it without interfering on other business.
I'm, I'm afraid you'd get into, I think, I'm afraid you'd get into legal, um, how, how do you feel, Ray? That makes me concerned.
Yeah, i- it would probably be a, um, illegal meeting because we have a quorum. If, if, uh, two people are a quorum for this committee, so.
Okay.
But
I would say, let me, let me run with it on my end, okay? And do a first stab at these changes and these adoptions, okay? And so, I mean, I will put this in, I will prioritize this with some other things, but that's, that's my problem to solve. Okay, and, uh, well, well, it is, right? And so, um, so don't worry about that, I appreciate it, but don't worry about that. And then I'll work with Tara about the best way of getting information to you and if you guys can do what you need to do.
You know, the whole, you can email the whole board, Mr. Parker can email the whole board. Uh, it's not an illegal meeting. He can give us information ahead of time for the meeting. We just can't discuss it among our, among ourselves.
Can we have, could we have, thinking about this thing about giving them input? When we have our next meeting, could we have a time at, at that meeting? If, at some point in time anyway, I would like for us to, to invite the public to come and give their input, uh, to the document. I don't, I'll leave that up to the authorities, the smarter people than me. That would be Ray, Jen and Mr. Parker. I'll leave that up to you guys, but, uh, I would like, if, if it's possible, I would really like to have those people given, given an opportunity.
Mm-hmm. No, I think that's important to know, like realistically, what does the day-to-day stuff look like? That, that's where public comment comes into play. So I would be in support of that as well. I don't know how to do it, I watched Heather do it.
Well, typically, we, uh, policy is a, a committee meeting, obviously, where you kinda do the work. And you put, you move it forward to the board. And then at that point, it's not a policy. And then there's public comment allowed at the board level when you're presenting that policy. So they do
I know when we were doing, when we were doing the, the dress code, which seemed like a really big issue back in February, um, the high school principals came and were able to share their pieces about the policy. So maybe we can organize, um, that kind of, um, to my kids. Um, maybe we can organize that kind of, uh, educational component for us so that we can learn more about what, what a teacher's, you know, a day in the life of a teacher looks like.
Yes.
But if they could just, a- again, I go back to the strategic plan, uh, because I was not part of that. I would like for, uh, I remember Sue, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't even remember her last name and she was so wonderful.
Porter.
Port, thank you, really hard name, right? But she, she made such a point of it. And I think they had very, very specific, um, very specific ideas of, on how it would be done. And it very well may be that it's exactly what you folks are saying. And if it is, that's fine, I'm happy. As long as they get the opportunity, I'm happy. Okay?
Okay.
And, yeah, and I think realistically, when the students come back and we're looking, you know, another six weeks, um, well, maybe five weeks at this point. But, you know, we, we have a little bit of time before the students come back in. But I, I do think that we need to make sure that the teachers, um, there's some sort of
Input.
Guidepost for, for them in the classrooms now.
You could, could put on your agenda that you're going to have, uh, public input. And, um, Tara can have people in the waiting room and then bring them in like we did. You know, if everybody on the committee agrees that we're taking public comments, then we can do that at the committee level. I don't see why not. You can put it right on the agenda.
I see Jim posting into us, the city side puts a link right in the agenda, so.
Yeah.
We can, I, I would, I don't know if, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's just interesting to see what everyone's gonna say anyway, so. Um, Mr. Parker, what do you think about that?
Public comment? I, I agree.
Okay.
This, this way we do it at the committee level and then we put together a, um,
Already, close and ready.
It's ready, it goes to the full committee, full board and we don't have to have another
Right, we vet it out down here.
Money, yeah. A lot, a lot more time, right, right, money.
Mm-hmm.
And part of, part of my process would be as Tara said, I mean, an excellent question about having our nurse, you know, uh, contribute to this document. And also, you know, um, uh, my principals, at least on the secondary level, you know, and I can have Garf do the same and ask him to do the same elementary. Um, and so, um, because, um, in terms of the context of school right now, we have to keep in mind, we just haven't really lived this in this, this yet. Okay, and so their, their comments at this point will be more foreshadowing than it will be having experienced it. So you wanna keep that in mind too. All right.
Right.
Um,
Yeah, I mean, I know at the hospital, everybody was extremely concerned the first couple of weeks. And then once we got into a routine, you recognize that, you know, personal safety was there, people's responsibilities were much higher than we were expecting. Um, we're actually, you know, no hospitalized COVID cases from southern, you know, from the hospital in regards to staff. So I, I think the safety component is there, we do just need to outline it. I would actually wonder, um, I know not everybody watches the policy meetings and isn't aware of what's on the agenda just because they're busy people. But, um, I think one of the key components is in getting buy-in and also, um, having staff feel safer is updating them on what we're doing. So I don't know if we have the ability to let them know that, you know, policy committee has started reviewing a safety policy in regards to masks and in-class or in-school measures. Um, just shoot out a quick, we're on it, we're talking about it, the next meeting's here. You know, shoot me an email if you have questions or comments. Um, just, just to keep people up to date that we're aware of, of the concerns and we are working on them. I mean, it's a district-wide email blast of two paragraphs. May make them feel better and not, um, kind of thrown to the, thrown to the wolves. I think a lot of them are feeling right now.
Well, I think, if I can comment on that. Okay, I don't know if you see just, should I raise my hand or I just, so.
Well, it's weird because I, on my phone, I can only see four people at a time. And when I'm talking, that's only three people at a time.
Sure. Um, but, um, uh, in fact, we did send out an, an email through the, um, principals. Um, because, uh, Mr. Smith was talking about, uh, some of the things that we are receiving, what's gonna be happening in classrooms and stations and sanitizer and masks and the whole nine yards. And so we emailed folks and said, if you have concerns or questions, email your principal, they'll bring it to me. If there's something I can't figure out, then I'll take it, you know, up, up the ladder to the superintendent and he will do as appropriate. Um, and so we really should be the first stop if people have questions, you know, because we might be able to answer them, you know?
Yeah. Oh, no, absolutely. I mean, I think direct questions, we have a, we have a hierarchy of people who know what's going on. I'm certainly the last person on that list. Um, no, I just think letting people know, like, we, we hear you, we're addressing it here.
Yes, and we will, it just made me think of that because we just, the principals, I did, uh, direct them to send something out to their people. And it was regarding TPE and safety and health concerns, things like this. So we've already laid the groundwork for that. And, uh, so we can do that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Parker, you'll learn I'm all about collaboration. Not a single person goes ignored in my world. It's a little annoying.
Good to them.
But thank you for indulging me.
No problem.
Are we ready to adjourn?
I think so.
So moved.
I'll second. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
I'm having so much fun though, but yes.
Motion carries three to zero, it's seven twenty.